...work session of the Wake County Board of Commissioners from January twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, at two o'clock P.M. Begin with a roll call vote commissioner, beginning with Commissioner Nelson.
President.
Commissioner Turner.
President.
Commissioner Dixon.
President.
Commissioner Aldrich.
President.
And the chair is present, let the record show that a clerk and all commissioners are all present. This is Stanford invocation, but I'll do and click the lead. Make way. Okay, we follow we just thank you once again of God for another opportunity to come and share the business of Wake County, Lord, and most of all, Lord, that we're here for the people, Lord. And God, we ask you to be with us today, Lord. Let us all say things that be pleasing to you, Lord, and we give you all the honor for it, Lord Jesus, and we ask you to bless all the people that's here as our guests. Lord, we ask you to bless them, give them prevalent mercies wherever they go back to their homes or business or jobs, Lord. And we ask you to be with us as we go out through the business of this meeting, Lord, and we thank you forward in Jesus' name. Amen.
Chief Officer Fledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let me thank all of you for coming, and let me thank Scott, Wakeville General Harold, for being here in this highly placed, we wish you'd come, Scott. We'll get right into our agenda. We'll start off with Matt Hayes. Matt Hayes, if you'll come, say it, sir, give us your name, address for the record, and we give you five minutes.
Okay, my name's Matt Hayes, twenty fifty-five Brogdon Road, Wake Cross. I would like to know if there's any discussion or been discussions on the railroad crossing, blocking from U.S. One to Main Crossing, U.S. One all the way down to Wakeona.
You want to agree with that, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, there's been several discussions at our transportation planning meeting that we have every second Thursday, well, it's the first fourth Thursday, every, on two-month increments every year, our TPCC meeting. We've talked that length with Mr. Carl, who is a liaison with CSX about the blockages in and around our community in an effort to try to alleviate some of them in and around our community. We realize that at remnant times that they have long blockages in the Wakeona area, also downtown, right here on the corridor going toward Savannah, the corridor out in Jamestown, the Johnny Minty Road has been discussed also. So we have had lengthy discussions at our transportation meeting, like I said, it's every two months, fourth Thursday of the month.
Is anything gonna be accomplished with it?
Reminantly, we have, they've changed the crew change location out to the area beyond Old Flanders provision, stuff of that nature on the Savannah corridor where they were crew changing at the Coca-Cola plant, they've done remnant things like that. Periodically, they have mechanical breakdowns that sometimes are a problem, and then they have just plain stand, uh, standstill stoppages with trains passing on the double-track corridor and various staging things that they do operationally that do cause impacts, yes, sir.
Yeah, I work, I work there, I understand the reasoning for their standstill, but if you're located anywhere north of that track, northwest of that track, and you got to have to get to the hospital, and I've seen it twice with ambulance sitting stuck on that side of the railroad track and you can't, cannot get there. If you're having a heart problem, four or five minutes is gonna matter, and it takes more than four or five minutes to go around the corridor Z and come back around, especially if they're, so the railroad to be called and to pull out of their yard just to make a train on time and for it to sit down for an hour on that track.
Right.
And they've made the trains longer than that.
Absolutely.
They made them over a mile long and cut, cut workers. So there ought to be some repercussions to the railroad for blocking our city roads and state highways. I mean, I know they carry our goods across the United States, they employ a lot of people here in Wake Cross, including myself, but they should not be above the right of everybody else. And I know y'all, somebody met in Atlanta over this situation about, about putting a overpass in, and I know it's gonna cause a problem with the Robinsons out there, so is anything else being done about a overpass?
We just, at our last meeting, passed a resolution, the city, county, and school board supporting the overpass at U.S. One. All three boards were in support of it, we sent it up to the DOT Commissioner and also our DOT board member called Congressional District One. So yes, sir, I mean, we have, and we would like to see it sooner rather than later. I think you know as well as I do, the struggles with regulating railroads lie more in the federal lab than the state or local lab. Surface Transportation Board regulates all Class One railroads. There may be some things that we could do, our attorney's here today, he may could lean in on a few things that we could do differently, but we've been told all kind of communities do this, that, and the other to regulate or make them break trains or whatever they do. But long story short is, we're not authorized to regulate railroads as a local government. Now, local roads, we have rights to cross railroads. The bulk of roads existed or were created in the crossings through an agreement with the railroad, and they gave us access and easement. You know as well as I do that the railroad's been in here since, you know, nineteen hundred, basically. This commission was not even a commission at that time when railroads were intersecting and dissecting our communities. So, long story short is, we do discuss that, we do talk with DOT and CSX officials about the length of trains and also their impact on our community, not just the transportation network in America, but our network here, immunity and the dangers of emergency services having to take alternate routes and the times that it takes them to make these alternate routes. All those discussions are not new to our community, but technically speaking, I'm not sure just how much enforcement and regulatory power we have over railroads from a local government.
Yeah, I know about fifteen years ago, I might be running over my time, with they had purchased property down ABC Avenue. Now, was that just so they could widen them tracks where they had done now, to put that double, double track in there?
I'm not aware, they did some acquisitions during the double-track process, but I'm not sure the specifics of what you're talking about. They have given them the rights in it along ABC Avenue to build roads through long-term easement agreements and stuff of that nature. One example being is where we extended ABC Avenue down to Turnus Road. All that was done through a subsequent agreement during the two thousand seven, two thousand eight widening project or double-track project. We actually annexed that project in where we could get them down to Turnus Road on a paved surface. It used to be an old remnant two-lane surface.
So it's paved all the way down to Turnus Road now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, didn't know that. I figured right at Wakeona, from Wakeona.
That don't cross the creek.
I was gonna say that don't cross the creek.
He's talking about all the.
Right, and it really don't help you none up, up this way.
It did, uh, it did give us the right to get down on a paved surface because that surface would get very wet and people would bob, bob down. So we did that, and we also installed signals on every crossing in conjunction with that project during two thousand seven, two thousand eight. We signaled out that border in Turnus also. Now, we did close a few crossings.
Yes.
But we got that pavement done all the way down to Turnus Road where they at least have a hard surface to ride if, if a train's blocking, but still, ten thousand foot and longer is the, and that's approaching two miles, you know, ten thousand feet, it's very close to two miles long. I think it's, you know, ten thousand five hundred sixty feet make two miles. And my understanding is they're even getting longer than ten thousand now, I'm not sure of that, but.
They're exceeding all they can exceed.
Right. But, yes, sir, we do have those discussions every two months at our transportation, and it comes up at just about every transportation meeting. You know, some pluses and minuses have probably come out of those discussions, and I say some progress has been made, and then we've probably not made as much as we should have, but we try to convey our concerns to their administrative staff.
And when is the next, when is the next meeting?
We could email you if you'd leave your information when it is, it's every two months that our, actually our planning and codes department put out the agenda for that, but it is a continuous agenda, but it's, it's every two months, and we have a mail out on that and email. So if you've got an email address, if you'll leave that with the clerk, we'll be glad to include anybody that wants to come from, if no committee gets started at those meetings.
Mr. Manager, if you've got anything you want, please.
Well, uh, yes, you know, before the meeting, there was a discussion about this issue, and it's been an ongoing issue ever since I've been here, and I can't tell you how many people have come to the Board of Commissioners and have had concerns. I think, at least as I recall most recently, folks in Jamestown have come forth, and they've, and the, everything the manager said is accurate to the extent that, that your, your local government is, even state government to that extent, is almost infinite with regard to their ability to effectuate, I'm gonna say, a prompt change in operational behavior of an organization like CSX, any railroad, not, not a big organization, but a railroad in particular. And their, the authority they have to, with respect to right-of-ways and to the, to the use of what's considered their, their property in the rail is, is pretty extensive and has been greatly protected in federal law. I will say that in other areas, you know, it's not, this isn't, it is a problem to some extent which is very unique to Wake Cross and Wake County because of the size of Rice Field here, there's no doubt about that, but this is not the only large change in, you know, location east of the Mississippi. There are others, and Jacksonville's got a large issue they're able to, that deal with through overpasses and so forth, but I think that in other settings, you know, we just, we read about it, we see where you are able to try to get a more prompt response, and that's really, you know, some, a plan to change something that's gonna come into existence thirty-six months from now is not very satisfying when the problem has occurred one to two times a week or, or three or four times a month is very familiar to the people who are being affected. And so where you've seen some, I, I don't know how effective it appeared to be effective is where the folks who are affected have come, and one thing they've done, they hear this by necessity, is to have these meetings every other month because, to, to discuss these issues. Well, I would suggest you, you're, you're letting officials, this governing body, when they have those meetings, they're talking and letting the folks at CSX know it, but it doesn't, I suspect, forgive me if I'm wrong, and I'll let the folks at CSX, they can call me, I don't know if it resonates like it would if citizens attended that meeting in a coordinated way, because there's at least half a dozen locations who've been continually affected over the last twenty-four months.
Oh, if CSX is don't respond, it's a Jacksonville newspaper.
Well, and, and, you know, I'm talking to you, you know, this is unlike any legal advice, I'm just talking about pragmatic realities that we've seen. You know, part one is to, is to try to, to, to get the ear of the folks who could make effectuate change and see if, you know, they'll step up and take a leadership role for this community. If they don't, they are not immune, I mean, to, from, from legal action, they may think that they are, but they aren't. And to the extent that they create a public safety hazard for people in certain subdivisions, that, that kind of conduct could be considered to be public nuisance, that has a safety implication to it, and that has, those are real issues for them, those are issues they're sensitive to. So without, without providing, say, legal advice, I'm just, you know, I'm acting more as a sounding board for you, if you'll indulge me to date for you to, you can think about those concepts, but I think that for the, for the folks in the various locations where they, where we continue to see a deafness by CSX to their needs, that I think is gonna require a, some form of coalition and a, and a, together and to come to the meeting with due deference and respect, that's the best way to do it, because, I mean, they, they have a lot, you know, they have a lot of, a lot of people complaining, they do do a lot, you work, they do do a lot of important things.
See, like Wake Cross is, is one of the, is the largest on CSX, right, you know, but the, Jacksonville's a separate issue, Jacksonville's where all your managers and all your.
They're removed from the day-to-day that way.
They don't, they don't know what goes on here, they don't see what goes on, you can call them, but they don't see it.
Well, the thing that we're missing, and I don't know if this is accurate, you may know, you can correct me, but I get the sense that, that even from the scheduling and the day-to-day operations, it's abstract, it's not done here, and so the folks who are actually carrying it out, it's being, decisions are being made remotely.
Exactly.
Until, until that, until the logistics people in Jacksonville, to, to they come to understand what the folks on the ground here in our community understand about what's it doing to the community, I don't think you're gonna get that change, and that's where you gotta bridge the gap. I think that's where there is a, that's, I don't think there's.
That's working out there, that's the same problem.
Well, and that's, when I, I use the word deafness, I don't think you have deafness, you know, you, we have people we can talk to here, and they understand, they live here, but figuring out how to get over the bridge, you know, go over that wall from, from what's happening here and from their local governance or representation to what's happening in Jacksonville, that's gonna be the key to success. And I wish I could tell you that I could turn this piece of paper over and tell you how to do that, if we knew that, we'd already done that, but, but I think that what we've learned from is that, you know, there's, this is, if it's, when it is working, it's working very slowly, and I think that what we take away from that is, I think, a little more community focus, and then, and in those meetings say, okay, we're here, you know, we'd like to figure out how you would advise somebody from Jacksonville to come be here with us next time, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Commissioner Aldrich.
I see Mr. Somner sitting out there, we had a similar discussion out on the same issue out in the.
The west end.
On the west end, and he would remember, and I'm sure the manager and, I'm not sure who else was, Mr. Logan with CSX, he's the director of.
Terminal Superintendent.
Terminal Superintendent. He actually gave his cell phone number to a number of those folks out here and said to call him if you had an issue with.
Let me tell you, when you call him, you do not get him.
I'm just playing what he tells you.
He was unaware that they were blocking the track like that, but he's got to be aware if he's any kind of management at all.
I called personally the other day, my daddy had, was, my father was in, sent to the emergency room, I was trying to get there. That train, I called to the train yard, they said it was, uh, one was broke down and one was being fueled. I had to go all the way to corridor Z to come around. Over an hour later, I come back through, that same train was sitting there, they said they had a car problem. It would've took longer than an hour for them to set them trains out. They were waiting on three other trains to come in, I sat there and watched them. That's all they were doing, and they claimed it was a broken-down car.
Well, until we can get that message to the people in Jacksonville, you know, we all have tried and done the same thing.
How about this one I did, at the next meeting, try to get some community support, and, and at that next meeting, let's use that meeting as an opportunity to plan the strategy, because you gotta be very deliberate about it, about, and find out who, who would be the representative, Paul, that would be there.
At least do this, you got the land to be.
Yeah, please, and see if we can.
Jacksonville.
Have, have them there, and again, in a very deliberate, professional, lightweight, say, you know, we're, we're.
I can get you people here to say, I mean, I hear about it.
The president of the railroad is from Wake Cross, Georgia.
Exactly.
So if we can't get on the phone, this gentleman down there, you know, and get some type of, of help, then there's, there's something else on, on the underlying of what's going on with these train blockages.
They don't see it, the upper management does not see the day-to-day basis of running, they see a number board, they, it gets out of time, that's why they care about it, don't matter how long it sits on our, as long as it makes it pass that track, that last turn on that yard. As workers, we fight that same issue coming and leaving the railroad. We sit there for hours, what, 'cause they have blockages on the rail yard. I leave my house an hour and a half early every day to make it to the, on my job on time. So, I mean, they do not see it. We brought it up to them, when the head management comes down here, they won't do nothing about it. We've asked for a crossing, some type of crossing to get in for ourselves.
Counselor, you, you gave them a great, uh, but, and, because, if, if, if it needs to go before a, a judge to get some type of relief from these safety issues and from blocking these tracks, there, there's probably a good possibility that a judge can communicate with them a lot better than we can.
And I'll say this as part, you know, the minutes of, of the county commission would reflect the numerous and many times that folks have come here to, to complain. But I, I'm a trial lawyer first, I've, I've been trying cases for almost thirty years, and if you catalog the right kind of information and get it to, to their management, I, I think they'll be able to see it differently, whether it's, and to some extent, things like petitions or, they could be effective, but if you're, you know, your story today, I mean, you videoed your story today, didn't you? All right?
I might be fired.
But you're not, nobody's hostile to CSX here, what we're trying to do is say, what's, what's the proper relationship, what's a good relationship between one of the largest employers in this community, one of the most important interests in this country, and the folks that have to live and work around it, and there's nothing wrong with that, and they understand that. And so I think, though, that if we can find the right mechanism, the right method to communicate with them and do that first, and then if it continues to fall on deaf ears, then, you know, the courts, you know, are much more receptive when people have done everything they can, exhausted every energy they can to try to find a, an amicable solution where reasonable, meaning if they would put their heads together, could get there, and when they don't, then, to, to Mr. Turner's point, that the courts can be very influential in that.
Well, what can I do between now and the next meeting?
Garner, excuse me, I apologize.
To give you any, uh, any evidence, gathering any evidence for people.
Start garnering support in your communities, and, and from that, you know, you come, and it is self-evident, the testimonials, if you will, are self-evident, gather your testimonials, and then be prepared, you know, the next meeting comes to try to see if we can provide the right folks there to start acting, you know, that they can hear these testimonials. And, and, you know, to say beyond that, what will or won't work, what should be done, I just think, I feel like that's certainly the first, the more substantial, meaningful step, and then, you know, when you hit the tennis ball to the other side of the net, then we'll see how, you know, how it comes back.
Okay.
You are talking about the next.
Yeah, transportation meeting, that's where we gotta, we gotta get them there and get so, so they can use them.
Now, does that, is that held here in this way?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
Sit down, Paul.
You get, you get a. I can get a dozen more, we could outline this room, I mean, I'm, all of Jamestown is tired of it.
Okay.
Well, it's not just Jamestown.
I mean, I understand it's all the surround. I mean, if that's what it takes to get people in here, I mean, to get something done, we'll do it.
I, I, you know, I, I, it may be, this is not a good idea, but it's, I, I don't, I think, I wouldn't suggest it, if I don't think it is the appropriate mechanism and method to start a very concerted and deliberate effort to, to bring about some positive change with respect to how they move and part rail in the community. And, and like I say, the, you would hope that, that it would have an immediate, resonate immediately, you would hope that it would find its way to the right place and really be given legitimate scrutiny, and there's some education, there, there may be some, and you're in the industry, but there may be some real explanation that as a community we have to accept that certain things can't be as, happen as quickly, but, but at least that dialogue begins. Right now, we're, we're not really having a dialogue, we're just articulating frustration without any real response, and, and I think we've got to, it's gotta be a dialogue.
I wish we could give you more positive evidence.
I've got it on the, I've got it on the books now, so I'll be back. I think, yeah, I'm sorry about over my five minutes, but.
And I think there's a lot of folks here that, that they have the same issue in different, you know, different implications.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commander.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I've also here for a little bit longer.
We need, have you filled it out?
Yes.
I put my email down on common.
Having his Sony hers, get back through, Kenny. Mr. Chris Cardwell, he'll come down and states his name and.
It'll take long, two minutes, I'll answer. Chris Cardwell, forty-one fifty-three Pine Chris Road, Wake Cross, Georgia. I attended the town hall sponsored by one of our representatives last week. Upon leaving, I seen one of our county commissioners. I asked him if I could explain to him my place in this county. He told me, and I quote, "If you don't quit acting the way you're acting at our meetings, you're going to jail," unquote. I didn't know commissioners had powers of the sheriff. I consider this a very serious threat. It is sad and scary that a commissioner is so bold to threaten one of his taxpayers to stay in land. He has no respect for his taxpayers, and it's plain that he has no respect for his sheriff either. Mr. Chairman.
What man.
You need to get, let me finish, sir, please, rules of order, point, rule of order, rule of order, go on. Mr. Chairman, you need to get control of your commission. I don't like being threatened, nobody does. I don't free time. Y'all got that, got that, Mr. Logan? Thank y'all, everybody have a great day. Thank you, sir, for your time.
I want to make it very clear, it was not me. I don't talk to nobody like that.
Let me, let me, let me clear that up. Look, I was going to, he stopped outside of that building, and for twenty minutes, that man ran and raged in my face, threatened me, told me what he was gonna do, he had to be escorted off that property by a detective and by the Dr. Deeper, and he's been barred and banned from ever going back on that campus. Now, what I told him as a friend, because I've known him for years, is if he continues to behave that way, and he gets with his outbursts, and he exhibits a incoherent behavior, that they will deal with him. I was telling that as a friend, not a threat, I didn't have to threaten him because it was one-on-one, and let me tell you how it ended. When they came outside to escort him off that property after he threatened me, he started yelling to the detective and to the, and to the president, telling them to leave me alone, telling them to leave me alone, he ran away. So the problem is, and he, by the way, he has threatened me, and I've got that on record from Dr. Deeper personally, that he's made a threat against me, okay? I'm not scared of that man, and so the point of it is, he is, he needs to probably get some help, you know, whether it's unison or wherever it may be, but I never threaten the man because, let me tell you something, you don't threaten a man that crazy. The bottom line is, he has a serious problem, and I've known him for years, we hired him and, and used him in many jobs, paid him a lot of money to do brick and blockwork for us. Now, he does have, he's disturbed in a way that I wish he had received some help, but I'm telling you, if he ever threatens me again, he'll have a warrant, okay? So if he, if he thinks that I threaten him, let him go to the sheriff and take a warrant out for him, all right? Bottom line is, what he just finished telling you is, he's been trying for me to come over there and visit him at his house. there and visit him at his house so he can tell me all about his problems, and I refuse to do that. He just got barred from the campus, he got barred from his church, he's been barred on, in, in different other locations. And the only reason he's not barred here is because we want to give everyone the opportunity to have their say. So, if he has a problem with me, I can deal with it. I promise. But for him to come in here and make that comment was a blatant misguided statement. And I guarantee you that he's been after a lot of people in his community. So, he is a loose cannon. And the bottom line is, if he threatens me one more time, then I will deal with it. Do you think I, do you think I could ever threaten that man? You think about it? All right? So, the bottom line is, I'm glad he had a say, but what he told you, and I can get, I can guarantee you, the same day that he made, that he was threatening me up in that parking lot is the same day they walked him out, off of that campus and they barred him for life. That's all I'm going to say about it.
Thank you, thank you, Colonel. Ms. Sony Hirsch, is that you?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you come right up here and take the chair and state your name and address for the record? We give you five minutes.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Pull that, pull that mic down, world.
How's that?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, ma'am.
My name is Sony Hirsch. I reside at seventeen fifty Fairfax Road, Mayor of Georgia. I'm a member of the Waycross Women's Club and I'm here on Waycross Women's Club behalf today. I'm conservation chairman. And what we are proposing to do, if it is, you fellas, or to the county, is I have spoken with the DOT and we want to do some beautification projects. We'll start out really slow at first, if it's agreeable with you. I understand public works is kind of related right now, but we would like to put some knockout roses to begin with in the median, up at the very front of the median, like three, just three roses, beginning at Swamp Park and up on the highway coming in and where Waycross College entrance, you know, coming in on eighty-two out there. Just start out small to start with. And the other beautification project we'd like to do probably would be over in front of the Walmart area. But we would like to do those three areas, just three roses, the median at one end to start with, but DOT told me that I had to have a commitment from y'all to take care of it, you know, once we get it in to plant those roses.
Ms. Manager, are you more aggressive?
Ms. Hirsch, a couple of locations you described, I think are going to be in the city limits now.
Okay, well.
The okey-doke Swamp Park, I think the Waycross College area you described.
Okay, well, it's still, it's, no, sir, it's not city limits because Waycross College area is the median before you come up to the college. So, it's still in the county. At least the city limits sign is still, you know, passed there. And it would just be three roses, so nine, we're talking about nine roses right now. Three over, you know, the median there at Swamp Park, three coming up from Green Line out there, and three in the Waycross College median there before you get to Waycross College. That's what we're talking about right now. And I'm told that we're fixing to do, or y'all are fixing to do a lot of beautification out there at Hatchport Road. So, the ladies in the office tell me they would advise us to wait to try to do any beautification there, because y'all are going to be working the pavement there a lot.
Did DOT indicate anything about any of their beautification projects or wildflowers or anything? They do have strips in certain areas that are designated out, out of the district office in Jessup for wildflowers and stuff of that nature. And so, they indicated no kind of funding or anything they had for any kind of beautification?
No, sir. No, sir. This would be strictly for us to, for the Waycross Women's Club to do.
Well, Chairman, we had a big grant at one time. It was a T grant. And it was done all along the corridor or along US one going out to Swamp Park, and it wound up being a netrosity for us. For a lot of reasons, the plants were probably planted in the wrong areas, they were the wrong type plants, they died. And I think it was a million dollar grant when it was all said and done. I think Mr. Shadezo was a big, you know, part of us getting that grant. And what happened in the long run is that we couldn't maintain them, they died, there was, you know, a lot of maybe foreign type plants that should not have been planted in that type soil, and it wound up jeopardizing our funding. Now, this sounds like a whole separate issue, but our success of maintaining plants are not good. We're pretty good. I'm just going to tell you some gospel truth, we're pretty, I told people too this before in our road blogs and, oh, we are not nursery people. They want us to replant daisies, they want us to, I think we could kill bayonet bushes, which are hard to kill. I mean, they pop up remnant everywhere from normal, but we're just not good at maintaining stuff. We used to have staff that was better at that when we had a groundskeeper and we used to trim the, the bushes in and around Carsway Avenue and Augusta.